We have approval, yes.
Sorry.
We also have the other names.
What?
We work with the department.
You're in anyway.
So we'll get here, my sir. Yeah. It's a shame because it was good billable. Well, this one I can't fill for all day.
Yep.
Good evening. Adequate notice has been given in accordance with the Sunshine Law. Notice was published on November 22, 2017, in the New Jersey Star-Ledger, the official newspaper for the township of Springfield for the year 2017, and posted in the Annex Building on December 29, 2017. Please join me in the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic of our sovereign states, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have one resolution. It's for applications.
Roll call.
No, I'm sorry. Roll call, please.
Mr. Luigi Monaco is absent. Mr. Stephen Hockstein?
Here.
Mr. David Schnur?
Here.
Mr. Mark Cunningham is absent. Mr. Daniel Poltrock?
Here.
Ms. Jody Cohen?
Here.
Mr. Harris Lauffer is absent. Vice Chair Greg Roth?
Here.
Chairman Anthony Fonseca?
Here.
We have a quorum, sir.
Thank you. Back to the approval of resolutions. There is one. It is application 2018-10, Jonathan Distano, 184 Pitt Road, Block 1801, Lot 71. That's for a front yard variance for a fence. Can I ask for a motion to approve?
Oh, motions.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Roll call, please.
Vice Chair Roth?
Yes.
Mr. Hockstein?
Yes.
Mr. Schnur?
Yes.
Mr. Poltrock?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Chairman Fonseca?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We have a few applications tonight. The first one is application 2018-11, Samuel Babich, 43 Oval, Block 1701, Lot 4. It's for a front yard variance for a fence. Please go forward.
Maybe it's this one.
Yeah, I will swear you in too, but we'll first adjust the microphone. And for everybody in the audience, if you guys don't mind, when you come up, just make sure you speak into the microphone because that's our way of making a record and recording. Even though we may be able to hear you, that's how we get a transcript.
Yeah, Sam. Yeah, it's this one.
It's this one.
Thanks. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Sam, now that our technical difficulties are over.
Yeah, I'm still good.
I'm going to swear you in. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear the testimony you're about to give and any evidence you present to the board is the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Thank you. Please state your name for the record, spelling your last name, and then give me your address.
Okay. My name is Leora Babich. The last name is B-A-B-I-C-H. The reason why I'm here tonight?
Your address. Real quick, your address.
Forty-three Golf Oval.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So tell us what you want, what you're looking for here.
We are looking for a six-foot fence in our backyard. It is in between ourselves and our neighbors. The reason why we are interested in having a fence placed there is when we moved in to Springfield six years ago, we had the most beautiful 30-foot trees that acted as a natural fence between ourselves and our neighbors. And then in the last storm, they all fell down. It was pretty tragic for our family, but I have three small children at home who need to be safe, who need some private life from the neighbors, and they need to feel secure in their own home. We would like to maintain that safety and that privacy for their childhood.
Okay. Okay, so you want to put a fence along the back of the property?
Yes, nothing to do with the street side. It's between ourselves and the neighbor's backyard.
So then where the row of shrubs are on the street, you don't want to put a fence there at all?
No, no. Nothing, it's nothing to do with like the street. It wouldn't block anyone's view in our backyard. This is strictly between us and the neighbors.
Okay. So you're not going from, there's nothing in front?
No.
It's just one row?
One row. One side of fencing that had trees that were already 30-foot over there. So now we're just going down a couple feet.
No, she doesn't want, she doesn't want this here.
Yes, she does.
No, no, you?
Just on this side, in between literally us and our neighbors, not on the street side.
Where the yellow is.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was looking at it. Oh, this is where the shrubs are?
This is the street here?
Right, okay, all right.
And we would like?
So this is just?
This is our neighbor's.
Right, okay.
Yeah, the proposed fence is where the Xs are.
Yeah.
In the back.
Yeah, okay, right. It's very, it's.
Where it's highlighted on my paper.
So word says hedge, there's nothing there now?
Say it again.
Word says hedge there, there's nothing there now, it's gone?
There's nothing. We had to remove them. They all were uprooted in the last storm.
So along the back of the property, they can go six feet to a certain point, and then it has to drop down?
No, they actually can go six feet, but the first or the last 30 feet, or the 30 feet from Golf Oval in, they can't have any fence in. So it's no fence for 30 feet, and then they're allowed six feet. So that's why they're here, because they want to extend that six feet all the way to the front yard.
Right, correct.
Yeah, all right. See, I thought it was here.
No, it's not in front, it's on the back side.
Yeah, it's got nothing to do really with my, with any cars coming by or any traffic. This is really just to replace our privacy.
We had a picture so we could see. I mean, I'm not opposed to.
I mean, this is our house here, and then this is our neighbor's house here.
No, no, I understand.
Yeah. Is there any problem with the sightline, Sam, coming on the street there to see around that?
I don't think so.
Will you let it extend?
No, there is no issue with sightline, but I, you know, my question is, do you need to bring the fence all the way to the property line?
Can you go stop, say, 10 feet from the property?
I mean, we'd very much like to extend to the end of the property line for our children's safety.
Well.
But you know something? I have a question. You know, you're talking about child safety, and, you know, I drove by your home, and I have a picture of your home that I took at about 5 o'clock this afternoon.
Yes.
And there's gaps in the hedge rows, so.
Right, that we're hoping will grow in.
Where's the safety factor versus the fence in the back of the property? I mean.
It's a very good question, one that I did think about ahead of time. The landscaper who we ordered the trees from and the prior trees that we had, you literally could not go through those trees. And in time, I'm really hoping that they will grow in. He said they will, and therefore that's going to be like our natural barrier. Our children never went through that before.
Well, how about if you extended the shrubs to kind of meet the fence in the back?
I think we did put them all the way to the side. Oh, you're saying around the corner again?
Yes, yes. Then it kind of really eliminates, you know.
Either that, or you run a fence from the back of your house to the fence and fence in your backyard.
Right, we weren't really interested in doing both sides.
Yeah, so there's probably a happy medium somewhere, that either you put some more shrubs, because running that fence all the way to the property line is against the ordinance, but there's probably some way we can make something work if you.
Okay, here to work with you.
The street, there are driveways here, and there are house spaces this street, or does it face the other?
I wasn't looking at that, so I don't know. So anybody?
Does your neighbor to the, I guess, the rear?
Right, where we want to put our fence between?
Yes, that neighbor. Their driveway is located on Golf Oval, or is that their backyard?
That's their backyard.
So where do they from?
They, their driveway, it's their backyard, and then like a few feet down, and then it's their driveway.
It's on the double corner?
Yeah, it's their double corner, yeah.
Okay, so.
Ours is on one side, theirs is on the opposite side, but we back their backyard. We don't back their driveway.
That's these.
Is that your question?
Yeah, I can picture it now.
Yeah.
Yeah, so their driveway is over here?
Yeah, so here's the, here's.
Probably up further.
I say, I say, come on.
This is the house that we're talking about.
So their driveway comes right next to where the fence is? No, it's their backyard.
See here, it's going to be like right here.
Over, overfall.
With the hedges.
Their backyard is against those trees that should start.
The easiest solution is to just put some more shrubs in there.
Yeah, right here, go from here to here with the shrubs and then the fence.
Well, the hedges are all over me. When you, Mr. Chairman, when you looked at the property, I don't, I haven't looked at this in a long time, but I'm looking at a Google map photo here, and it shows the hedges all over the sidewalk. Is that the case still?
No.
I wish.
No.
We miss that.
No, there's.
It's all brand new.
It's.
It was torn down in the storm.
Sam, if you want to come up here and you can take a look at this.
Yeah.
Because this picture for Google Art is old. Thank you.
That's the side. Yeah, I mean, it looks terrific. And I would think just bring, you know, maybe three or four more of those shrubs around the bend and let it meet the fence, and that takes care of everything.
Yeah, I agree. I think if we go 10 feet from the property line and then do that gap with.
Yeah, I think that that would, that's nice.
No possibility of extending it all the way. Ready, please?
Well, you already, that would already be extra 20 feet we gave.
Okay.
You know, I mean, I'm comfortable, and I think the board is comfortable with something like that. Is there anybody, are professionals have any questions?
No, I think.
Anybody else on the board have any questions? Is there anybody from the public that would like to be heard on this matter? I think the board is comfortable with allowing you to extend the fence approximately 20 feet, and then just, that's it. And it's up to you whether you want to put some more shrubs in or not, but.
So how far away is it from the sidewalk?
10 feet off the property.
10 feet, 10 feet off the property.
The property, so that's the.
It's about 12 feet.
About 12 feet, then.
12 feet from the sidewalk?
From the sidewalk, from the sidewalk. It's 10 feet from the property line, but the property line is about two feet from the sidewalk.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Okay, got a vote on it.
Not quite yet, almost.
Okay.
We're getting there.
We may get in and out.
Thank you.
I would like to ask for an approval for application 2018-11, Samuel Babich at 43 Golf Oval, Block 1704, Lot 4, front yard variance. The fence.
Can I have one more person speak? Is that possible?
We.
No, okay, thank you, forget it.
We're now in deliberation.
Sorry for interrupting.
That's, it's okay. With the stipulation that the fence will not exceed, will not come more than, within 12 feet of the property line, and at that point, you can put shrubs or whichever you'd like there. Okay? Is there a motion to approve?
Well, we want Sam to, after he sees it, wants to see it staked out before you.
Before the fence is actually installed?
Okay.
Contact the engineering department to make sure that it's set in the right place.
Okay.
All right? This way it doesn't have to come out and be moved or anything like that.
Okay.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the application?
I'll move to approved application 2018-11 with the stipulation as cited by our chairman.
Is there a second?
A second.
We have a roll call, please.
Mr. Hockstein?
Yes.
Mr. Schnur?
Yes.
Mr. Poltrock?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
No.
Vice Chair Roth?
Yes.
And Chairman Fonseca?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next application is application 2018-13, Catherine Drummond, 146 Henshaw Avenue, Block 1204, Lot 33. That's for a front yard variance for a fence. Please come forward.
Okay.
Have you sworn in?
Sure. I will swear you both in, so if you both raise your hand, if you're both going to testify, and then we'll start with you, ma'am, when we ask you to like say who you are, so. Okay, you guys, please raise your right hand. Do you swear a testimony you're about to give? Sir, you as well? Raise your, you're not going to talk? Okay. Do you swear a testimony you're about to give and any evidence you present to the board is the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Thank you. Please state your name for the record, spelling your last name.
My name's Catherine, and my husband Edward, Catherine Drummond. And Catherine is K-A-T-H-R-Y-N.
And your address, ma'am?
146 Henshaw Avenue.
Okay, sir, if at any point you want to testify, I'm happy to swear you in, but as of right now, since you're not, I ask that you refrain from verbally commenting. Okay? Thank you.
Please let us know.
The hedges on our property, and we are older, as you can tell, and we can't maintain them anymore, so we'd like the hedges taken down and put up a four-foot fence. So we have some privacy that the hedges gave us before, because when our children and grandchildren come over, we live right across from Henshaw Park, so, you know, we'd like a little privacy.
Four-foot white vinyl fence, is that what you're looking for?
Yes.
I think they have tan fence that they have.
I think I actually read tan.
We've been to tan, yes, we are, yes, thank you.
That's fine, that's fine. I don't really have any questions. Anybody on the board have any questions?
No.
Do our professionals have any questions?
No issues.
Is there anybody from the public that would like to be heard on this application? I think we can go ahead and approve your application.
Yep.
I'd like to make a motion to approve application 2018-13, Catherine Drummond at 146 Henshaw Avenue, Block 1204, Lot 33, for front yard variance for a fence. Is there a motion to approve, please?
Motion.
Second.
Thank you. We have a roll call.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Poltrock?
Yes.
Mr. Hockstein?
Yes.
Mr. Schnur?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Roth?
Yes.
And Chairman Fonseca?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was very. Lot 13, 13.04, side yard variance for new house.
For the record, Chairman Fonseca has recused himself from this application, so Vice Chair Roth will be taking over as chair.
The applicant owner is S-P-D-B-W-L-L-C.
What did I say?
There was an extra C or something, and there are W.
S-P-D-B-W-C.
No, S-P-D-B-W-L-L-C.
It's probably a typo on my end.
Oh, there's an extra C, okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to clear the record.
No problem.
All right. Clara Herelik appearing on behalf of applicant owner, S-P-D-B-W-L-L-C, with regard to a right side yard setback request for variance. Very simply stated, this is for the proposed lot 13.04, which is to be known as For Clara Court. Just a very, very brief history, this is one lot of a four-lot subdivision that used to be known as 276 Boltis Row West. And what we are asking for is just one variance. The idea is that we are going to relocate the proposed house such that it does require the extra five feet of variance on the right side. You should know that per the final approval that was given by the planning board with regard to the subdivision, there was a requirement on the left side, that the left side yard setback would be 15 feet, and we are not touching that. That's not being impacted at all. In addition, our ordinances require that both side yards need to add to a total of 20 feet, and we have it, because 15 on the left, five on the right, is still 20. So our proposed amount of side yard still meets the requirements for both side yard setbacks. This evening I have with me, and we'll be brief because we know that you have a busy agenda, but it's important that I have with me a planner, which is James Watson of EKA Associates. He is a licensed professional planner and a professional land surveyor. The owner of the property is also here this evening, in the event that you have any questions for him. Now, I'm going to let the planner speak to the planning issues, but I think for the benefit of the board, I had already submitted an application with the reasons for variance, but I just wanted to very quickly give you an overview summation of what that is. So as I stated, we're seeking a five-foot side yard setback variance for the right side of this proposed house, and we want to let you know that the 15-foot requirement, which would under normal circumstances be 10 feet, in our opinion creates a hardship for this lot. Moving that house downward, as we're doing, to the advantages very quickly are that we reduce lot coverage, we lower the house, we improve the rear yard of the proposed house, which increases privacy and gives a better streetscape. That having been said, I do believe that our testimony from our planner will show that we've met all the requirements for you to grant the variance, and I would like, therefore, Mr. Watson to be sworn in.
Okay, Mr. Watson, please raise your right hand. Do you swear a testimony you're about to give, and any evidence you present to the board is the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Please state your name for the record, spelling your last name, and give your business address.
Sure, James Watson, W-A-T-S-O-N, from EKA Associates, 328 Park Avenue, Scotch Plains, New Jersey.
Okay, and could you, Mr. Watson, give the board the benefit of your credentials just briefly?
Sure, I'm a licensed land surveyor in New Jersey and New York, as well as a licensed professional planner in New Jersey. I'm out on a weekly basis. I saw Ms. Delachlan, what, last week? Most of my testimonies, Westfield, Scotch Plains, Fanwood, Summit, Chatham, I could keep going.
Is your license in effect?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
So, Mr. Watson, if you would, for the board, please, just tell them the overview of the property and what we're proposing, and the planning reasons why this variance should be granted.
Sure. What I'll do is take you through the plans real quick. If you have any questions when I'm done, ask, and then I'll go into the planning testimony. What you have before you is a three-sheet set, typical cover sheet with the tax map in the center with the zoning criteria overlaid, key maps on the right, signature blocks below that, art title block, and table of contents below that. Owner is within 200 feet in the upper left with some general notes. In the bottom, the most important part is a schedule of general requirements for the S-75 single-family zone. As you'll notice, we comply with everything with the exception of one side yard setback required. It's 10, we're asking for 5. Sheet 2 is titled variance plan and dated 6/26/18. This is on a blow-up of the lot, and you can see the area that we're talking about. It's a triangular-shaped piece that encroaches into the 10-foot side yard requirement. When you calculate the area, this area is 46 square feet, basically the area of a sheet and a half of plywood we're asking for. The lot is a little over 12,000 square feet. You can see the proposed deck, it's 18 by 18, and still gives you about, at its closest point, about seven feet to the rear setback line. Again, everything complies with what we're doing, with the exception of the one side yard setback. And finally, the last sheet is an overall site layout exhibit dated 6/26/18. Again, this shows you the entire subdivision, where this lot came from, and it shows you the placement of the house as we're proposing with this application. I've also prepared an exhibit titled Conforming Plot Plan dated.
And that was not part of the application, so that will be marked.
Okay, so why don't we mark that as a 1? If you could just for the record, describe what it is and then the date.
Sure. Okay. This is titled Conforming Plot Plan, and basically what we did, we took the same exact house and pushed it back 15 feet to show you that we could comply with everything that your ordinance requires, but our choice is to move it 15 feet closer so that we get, as some of the points that Clara talked about, we can be closer to the street, it will match the house going in next door, because that has a conforming front yard. I mean, holding one on top of the other, it's basically the same thing. Like I said, we're just shoving everything forward 15 feet. That's pretty much it for the plans. Anybody have questions about what they're looking at here?
I do.
Sure.
Are your plans based on the footprint of the house or the roof overhangs? Because I believe the roof overhangs count for setback.
I didn't think the roof overhangs, the E's and gutters usually don't, it's living space.
Well, there's an ordinance that you're allowed the 18, Sam, if you want to speak to that, there's an ordinance that allows the overhang to go 18 inches into the setback.
Is that true?
Yes.
We changed our ordinance, I think, a year ago to allow up to 18 inches.
Okay.
Okay? All right, just.
Now, if we could just go through the plan.
I'm assuming the overhang is 18 inches or less.
We'll comply if it is.
Yeah, it'll, yeah.
Basically, tonight, in a nutshell, this application's about asking if we can violate this side yard setback again by five feet. It's a total of 46 square feet that we're asking for, not a lot. It's almost de minimis, and if you don't consider it de minimis, we can keep going, and I'll talk about a C2, because that's what we're going to apply under tonight. You have to talk about five things when we discuss a C2. It has to be a specific parcel, you have to examine the positive criteria, you have to discuss the negative criteria. The board has to weigh the positives and negatives, and finally, you have to come to a conclusion that there is no substantial detriment to your zoning ordinance or your master plan. Tonight, when we talk about this, our lot, when you look at the cover sheet, is the smallest lot in the subdivision by 3,000 square feet. The other two, the other three lots are 15,000, 20, and 20,000. So, like I said, we are 3,000 square feet smaller than the next smallest lot. Also, when this subdivision was granted, there was a condition placed on it that there was to be a 15-foot side yard setback on our southeasterly line. That was to make the buffer bigger for the neighbors whose rear yards abutted to this line. So starting off, we're handcuffed with a five-yard, a five-foot restriction that's bigger than anybody else has. If it doesn't make it specific, I think it goes next step, and I think it makes it actually Next, talking about the positives, that comes from the purposes of zoning. I believe we comply with C without reading it. It's basically airlight and open space. We have 2,000 square feet more than what's required for your lot area. We meet all of your setbacks with the exception, I'll keep saying it, 46 square feet of this house is too close. And it starts at five feet, and it tapers down to zero 15 feet later. Next, I believe we comply with E. Layman's terms, that's streetscape. What's this going to look like when we're done? Next door does not have the same restrictions we do, so they can build a similar house. And when you have subdivisions, you want everything to look similar. Not exact, you don't want it mirrored, but you want these things similar-sized and similarly masked. Again, you can see the difference. We're shoving this thing back 15 feet to comply. It's not really affecting anybody with the exception of lot 13.04, which is next to us?
It's 13.04. It's 13.03.
13.03 is next to us. And as of right now, there's nothing built in this subdivision, so the only person that would actually see this is the property owner to the northwest, and that house isn't even built or even contemplated yet. If you let us do this, like I said, this is coming forward 15 feet. You're going to have 15 by 20 less pavement. You're going to allow them room to put a reasonable deck in the rear, so it's going to match whatever else is in this subdivision. Next positive is I without reading it again. It's about creative design. Sliding this forward, like I said, creates less impervious coverage, allows a usable deck on the rear, and a larger buffer to the rear yard and the lots to our southwest. Finally, M, which goes to lessening the cost of development. All the utilities are in place, and if we move lot lines, which we could to do this, and the reason we didn't is... Let me go back to the cover sheet again. When this subdivision was approved, we then went and got approval from American Water for the mains and the water supply for this, and they, one of their requirements was that we put a new water main along the lot line between lot 13.03 and 13.02, connect to the existing water main that's in the utility easement to create a loop. So that was done before they could even start construction, so we can't move the lot line because we have a water main in there. Theoretically, we could, but we'd have to tear the water main up and move it to go with the lot line. So it's a huge expense that if the water main wasn't there, we would just adjust the lot lines and do it because we have plenty of room on lot 13.02 to do this. But, like I said, the expense is what hampers us. That's it for the positives. Negatives, traffic and noise that come from a residential development, they're already anticipated here. It's the norm. There's nothing going on here that you would need to attach a condition to. I believe that what we're asking for is minimal at best. And like I said, the only person that's affected by this whole thing is the guy on 13.03, and he has a lot that's over 20,000 square feet. Finally, when you weigh all of this out, I think the positives of a nice streetscape, not moving and digging up a water main to make this conforming, you have to come to the same conclusion I do, that there's no substantial detriment to your master plan or your zoning ordinance.
So, to conclude then, Mr. Watson, you would state that your testimony, as summed up, would mean that this proposed side yard setback variance in no way substantially is a detriment to the public?
No, not at all.
And does not affect the master plan?
Or the zoning ordinance.
And is not in violation of anything?
No, we're not setting a precedent. And like I said, we have specific, I don't want to call them hardships, they're not that big of a deal, but we do have the extra setback requirement on the other side, so we're making the building envelope similar going around.
And in fact, based on Venus' Philanthropus Law, this would advance that?
Yes.
I have no further questions for Mr. Watson.
Any questions from the board? Any questions from the public?
Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? No questions?
Is there any concern with when they put the house on lot 13.03 that potentially it can only be 15 feet between the lot on, the house on 13.03 and 13.04?
The lot is a lot bigger than this lot, and the building envelope a lot bigger, so I'm assuming that the house that will be built there will not be built right to the setback lines. So I don't see an issue. Maybe you can ask the property owner, but I don't see an issue.
Are you okay with having the house on 13.03 be 15 feet from that property line? So you can have the 20-foot buffer? Because you have a pretty big lot there. Would you agree to that restriction possibly?
I don't think that needs to be a restriction here because, number one, we're here for the variance for 13.04, and now you're putting an unnecessary restriction on 13.03. It is a very large lot. I mean, right now, there's been no houses on for that lot, so I can't, I don't want to put an unnecessary restriction. They're going to comply with setback. We won't be here before this board's seeking a variance for that lot, which would make it even smaller, but we're here for 13.04. I think that's an unnecessary restriction.
I don't know how anybody else feels about that.
And keep in mind that 13.03 is going to know about this when they buy the lot and design a house to move in. So if it is a problem, they can handle it with their design. They can figure some buffering if they don't like it. And keep in mind, it's only a 15-foot stretch of the house because of the skew of the side lot line.
That's true. That was my only concern.
No. Valid concern.
Okay. I'll ask it again. Is there anybody from the public who wants to speak on this matter? Okay, so I'd like to ask for an approval for...
2018-14.
But I should have it right here. Oh, it moved. There you go. Ask for approval for application 2018-14, SPD BW LLC, 4 Clara Court, Block 1105, Lot 13.04, side yard variance for the new house.
Motion?
Second.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Poltrock?
Yep.
Mr. Hockstein?
Yes.
Mr. Schnerr?
Yes.
Vice Chair Roth?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Good job. Okay. Our next application is application 28, 2018-8, Gerald Weiss, 18 South Derby Road, Block 3604, Lot 15. This is a bulk variance for a commercial vehicle. Please come forward.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Attorney Harvey Forth, on behalf of the applicant, Jerry Weiss.
Who are you?
You can have a seat, sir.
If I may?
Please.
Okay. We're here tonight seeking either a bulk variances or actually a certificate of nonconforming use, which I really believe is appropriate for this matter in view of everything. And that is, we have, under your ordinance, 2016 to 2017, the ordinance which came into place requiring the bulk variances for commercial vehicles being parked on a residential driveway. That in itself voided out the prior ordinance that was in place since July 2010 where permits were given $75 a year to proc, for someone to park their own commercial vehicle on their residential property. Mr. Weiss will be testifying. In fact, he's, he has parked his commercial vehicle, a van of sorts, for approximately 40 years on his driveway since he's lived here in Springfield on South Derby Road. Based on the testimony that I'll be offering from Mr. Weiss today and some of the neighbors that are willing to support him, in that fact, I think this is a little bit different than the North Vale versus Splundo case, 85 New Jersey, 56. That is the resemblance of the zoning ordinance, which is normally given preference for the ordinance itself. The fact that there has been a change and there's been no problem associated with this for the 40-plus years prior to the 2010 ordinance and the continued use of this, I would submit that this is a nonconforming use and the bulk variance is not necessary. And that I'd leave to the good guidance of your counsel, Attorney Lucklin. There is clearly, you'll have testimony that there's no detriment to this application again by the 40-plus years. It does not create any adversity to the neighborhood again by virtue of that, and it's particularly suitable by the photographs that you will be seeing that this is not a owner's truck. It's just a van that utilizes and for his day-to-day occupation for the past 40-some odd years. With that, I would offer Mr. Weiss. Ms. Lucklin, would you like to-
Sure. Mr. Weiss, please raise your right hand. Do you swear a testimony you're about to give, and any evidence you present to the board is the truth, nothing but the truth to help you guide?
Yes.
Thank you. Please state your name for the record, spelling your last name.
Gerald Weiss, W E I S S.
And your address, sir?
18 South Derby Road.
Thank you.
Mr. Weiss, how long have you lived at South Derby Road?
About 40 years.
Okay. And during that entire 40 years, what has been your occupation?
Air conditioning and heating.
Okay. And does that require a commercial van or a commercial vehicle?
Yes.
Okay. And have you parked that vehicle or the prior commercial vehicle on your driveway during that time?
Yes.
Could you try and speak up just so we capture for the record?
It's either that or you can use the-
Counsel, can you use the microphone, counsel, please?
Yes.
No, counsel. Can counsel use the microphone, please?
No, you take this one. Take that one, and you can kind of move around. There you go.
Mr. Weiss, in the 40 years that you've been parking your vehicle on your driveway, has anyone ever complained to you about the vehicle?
Not that I know of.
And is it essentially the same type of van vehicle that's shown in the pictures?
Yes.
Does those photographs that are part of your application consistently and accurately portray your vehicle on your driveway?
Yes.
No further questions.
Your van, do you have magnetic?
Yes.
Okay. What about if you took the, peeled off the signs at the end of the day and in the morning and put them back on?
I can do that if you want.
Anybody have any questions on the board? Do our professionals have any questions?
I have no issues. Nope.
Okay. Is there anybody from the public that would like to be heard on this matter?
Ma'am, I will swear you in. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear a testimony you're about to give, and any evidence you present to the board is the truth and nothing but the truth to help you guide?
I do.
Thank you. Please state your name for the record, spelling your last name, and then giving your address.
My name is Patricia Spirito, S P I R I T O. I live at 14 South Derby Road. I've been a neighbor of Jerry's for, well, I've been in the neighborhood for 44 years. Jerry's been my neighbor for over 40 years. We have a nice, quiet neighborhood. Nobody has ever complained about his truck, and it's just part of the neighborhood. We don't even notice it there, to tell you the truth. He's a really good neighbor, and he's there to help everybody out when they need it, so...
Good.
I really think that you should consider this.
Fine. Thank you. If you could take the signs off at the end of the day and put them back on in the morning, I think we can go ahead and grant the application with that stipulation.
Very good.
I'd like to ask for a motion to approve application 2018-8, Gerald Weiss, 18 South Derby Road, Block 3604, Lot 15, for a bulk variance for a commercial vehicle with the stipulation that he'll take the magnetic signs off the vehicle at the end of the day and put them, place them back on in the morning. Is there a motion to approve?
I move.
Is there a second?
Second.
May we have a roll call?
Vice Chair Roth?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Hockstein?
Yes.
Mr. Schnerr?
Yes.
Mr. Poltrock?
Yes.
And Chairman Fonseca?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Good to see you. Thank you.
We're going to take a short recess for a few minutes.
Is it off, Sam?
It is off.
Oh, but is it recording on?
It's off.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. [music] Okay. Our next-
Is it off, Sam? Oh, is it recording on? Yeah.
All right.
... But we went ahead and re-noted to all the two-hundred-foot owners. We republished, so we've continued the proper notice for tonight, too, even though on the record, it has a different night. That's fine.
Okay. So, briefly, the concerns, I think, that the board had last month when we were here, related really to a proposed generator, primarily proposed landscaping. There was questions about proposed parking, and there was questions about proposed circulation to get in and out of the school. So, what I'd like to do, my civil engineer would address those concerns, except for the school drop-off. My traffic engineer would talk about those. So, if it pleases the board, I'd like to start with my civil engineer. He's still under oath, unless you want him re-s sworn.
No, it's fine.
It's fine.
You understand you're still under oath, sir?
I do.
Okay, great. Just make sure you speak into the microphone for the record. Thank you.
Teal, if you could, if you have something that we haven't marked already before you start, I'd like to mark it and identify it. I think we left off at A2, is that correct?
Uh, no, we're now on A3, I believe.
Yes, right, 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 that, yeah.
Because A1 was the site plan, and A2 was the eleven-by-seventeen rendering of the area with the generator.
So, if you could mark this A3 with today's date and describe on the record what you're marking?
Good evening.
How you doing?
Just for the, just to remind the board, my name is Teal Jeffers with Jeffers Engineering Associates. What I'd like to do is refer to an exhibit here tonight, exhibit A3, which is a rendered version of the site plan that was submitted as part of the application with a few proposed modifications I'd like to present to the board this evening. As Mr. Vidialo had mentioned, there are three areas that I'd like to talk about. First, I'd like to talk about the generator, then the landscaping, and then the parking. First, let's talk about the generator. At the last meeting, as the board may recall, the, there's a proposed generator, an eighty kilowatt natural gas-fired generator, standby generator, not an emergency generator, but a standby generator, proposed on the south side of the building in this location here. The last meeting, we proposed to relocate it to the other side of the sidewalk, and there were some questions by the board in terms of its location, screening, noise levels, and so forth. And in response to that, we did a little bit more research so we can address those questions specifically, and I'd like to talk about that. First, the board had questioned whether or not there was a possibility of locating that generator in the courtyard. We looked at the courtyard area. The courtyard is approximately twenty feet in width, and it has windows around three sides. Based on code requirements and separation from exhausts from the generator to window openings and door openings and so forth, we were not able to locate the generator in that area and comply with those code requirement setbacks. It is, it is proposed to be located on the southern side of the building. There was a comment or concern about screening. How is it, will this be visible? And to address that, we are proposing around the generator, on three sides of the generator, a six-foot-high solid wood fence. The wood fence would be constructed of two-by-six timbers, ship black construction, so the joints meet flush, and it's a solid wood fence, solid and flush with the ground, up six foot high, that would screen the view of the generator, which is only about five foot in height, and also help to mitigate some of the sound levels from the generator. The generator, according to the manufacturer's information, which is set back thirty-five feet from the property line, is rated to have a noise level at the property line of about sixty-three decibels. This is comparable to an air conditioner and lower than a lawnmower, leaf blower, snow blower, that would be, sounds commonly occurring in a residential yard. When we look at the impact of the wood fence around that enclosure, based on the Noise Barrier Design Handbook, the fence will help reduce that noise level, it'll reduce it by almost a third, down to about forty-two decibels, which, according to resources, is comparable to a household refrigerator, maybe some of the older refrigerators, a computer, or even a small babbling brook, something very common, the noise levels that are very low and much lower than noises that are commonly associated with residential yards with a lawnmower and so forth. So, even at, without the fence, the noise level at the property line complies with noise level limitations established by the DEP. We're proposing a fence to not only screen it, but to help even further mitigate those sound levels. So, based on those modifications, we don't foresee that generator having any adverse impact on the neighboring property owners. The, the next comment or question pertains to landscaping. The proposed improvements will require the removal of four existing trees, three of them in the rear of the building, and one of them in the front of the building. To offset that and to address the board's concerns, we are proposing to add some landscaping, which I have represented here diagrammatically. What we would propose is that we would work with a board engineer and a board planner to submit an actual landscape plan with specific species and so forth for approval, but what I'd like to do is show you what we are proposing in terms of landscaping. We are proposing to add three trees along the Mountain Avenue frontage to provide a streetscape enhancement here, adding a fourth tree on the island at the entrance to the parking lot in the rear, and then landscaping the proposed grass areas that are identified here in a darker green, if the board members can see that, around the proposed access ramp along the back of the building and at the island at the entrance to the, to the parking lot. And then lastly, I'd like to talk about the parking. At the last meeting, the board had raised question about the number of parking spaces and whether or not that was suitable for the proposed uses at the site. If the board recalls, the parking evaluation initially was based upon one stall for employee, for the nursery school, and for the Pace Center. The Pace Center, we accounted for a twenty percent reduction based on twenty percent of the employees using public transportation or alternate means of getting to the site, and the board had some concern with that. So, we worked with the applicant on some programmatic changes, as well as some site changes, to address that. First, the applicant is proposing to relocate five of the van parking spaces. Initially, there were seven van parking spaces proposed. They're proposing to relocate five of them to an off-site location. The Pace facility would make arrangements in agreement with an off-site location to park those vans and the, and the cars for the drivers of those vans at an off-site location, reducing to only two van parking spaces here. With the relocation of those van parking spaces, the number of employees for the Pace facility will be reduced to forty-five in terms of who could potentially be parking at the site. With the assumption that none of those employees will use public transportation or alternate means. When we look at the parking requirement that then is generated by those forty-five employees, and just to clarify, those forty-five employees would consist of the Pace Center employees, the drivers of the two vans, as well as two people of the church, the pastor and the pastor's assistant, just for clarification. With that reduction, the parking requirement for the Pace Center goes to forty-five parking spaces, with the seven spaces that were previously allocated for the nursery school, which then gives a total parking requirement of fifty-two parking spaces. With this revision, in the back, there will be a total of fifty-six parking spaces for cars and two for vans, which leaves us in excess of four parking spaces over top of what's required. And again, that's based on no employees using public transportation or alternate means of getting to the site. In addition to that, just for some clarification, and I know there was some, some discussion, testimony provided previously, the, with the Pace Center employees, some of those employees are on scheduled work times, where some of the, the times that some employees work will not overlap with some other employees. So, in essence, not all the forty-five parking spaces for the Pace Center will be utilized at the same time. In essence, sometimes the employee who's working in the morning may leave, and an employee working in the afternoon parks in that spot. So, there, there's not anticipated to be all forty-five employees there at the same time, which will leave some additional parking spaces up and beyond the four excess that are, that are estimated. And again, if, understanding that some of the Pace employees will be using public transportation, those employees will then, or as a result of those, those employees using it, there will be some additional extra parking spaces that would result. So, in summary, the calculations and revisions that we're proposing with the relocation of the van parking off-site will leave us in excess of four parking spaces in the rear parking lot. In reality, with the, the work schedule of the Pace facility employees, as well as the potential for them to use alternate means of transportation, we would anticipate, in addition to four parking spaces, being free and available in the back parking lot. So, in that, it's our opinion that there will be sufficient parking spaces for the proposed uses under the proposal of relocating the five van stalls to an off-site location. And that's, that hits, the covers the three points. Are there any questions for the, sir, yes?
At one time, how many employees will actually be there? You said they won't overlap, so at one time, how many would actually be there, based on, maybe you can't answer this question, but based on a normal shift, let's say?
Yeah, we could, I mean, I can bring up another witness. I mean, I've spoken to the operator. The operator estimated, I believe it was a few, a couple of employees might overlap. I can try to get you more info on that, but if those employees overlap, I believe that would just be, in other words, even if nobody overlapped, then the forty-five spaces would be full, and there'd be the four extra, if nobody overlapped at all. But there'll be some overlap, so actually, I think Mr. Jeffers was saying it's actually going to be less than the forty-five. He's providing enough spaces if nobody overlaps at all. Because the board was concerned, they wanted to build in a nice buffer, because they know you had mentioned last time that you have to have, you know, a better buffer. But I could ask my other witness, she may have an estimate. I know when we were discussing it, it was a few, a couple of, for example, somebody might come in in the morning and leave pretty early, a home health aide, and there might be another home health aide that only really comes in in the afternoon. It's like that.
And can you just refresh my recollection? Did they anticipate that there would be visitors?
Uh, no. The testimony last time was, there's not going to be visitors, and although it's not prohibited, and I can ask the witness to mention this again, but although it's not prohibited, there's nothing that prevents a, and this has nothing to do with a visitor, but drop-offs. Almost everybody comes by van. They find that over ninety-nine percent of their participants come by van, because they find, I think, that moving the participants around is not easy for a family where that participant lives. So, the fact that we have good, safe transportation apparently is a huge benefit, so everybody takes advantage of that. So, there are no visitors, but a daughter could drop off her father or something, but it's almost unheard of, because the vans are so convenient and taking advantage of them. And if you want to hear from any of my witnesses, I'm proffering what was, you know, mentioned last time, but just let me know.
You did also say that, correct me if I'm wrong, but there are going to be doctors on site?
Yeah, yes, there, there...
Is that included in those forty-five?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yes. And the pastor, by the way, for the church, he's also, the Pace Center sort of has a part-time chaplain, so he's included in the employee count and his assistant, because the Pace Centers anticipate having a part-time chaplain, and he's there actually anyway, so that's why he was included in our count originally also.
Sorry, you may have said this, but how many employees are there for the Pace Center?
The total count is forty, will be, under this proposal of relocating the van parking spaces off-site, will be forty-five. There are a total of fifty that is composed of the staff for the Pace Center, the drivers of the seven vans, and the pastor and his assistant. When we relocate five vans and the drivers to an off-site location, that reduces that to forty-five on site.
Anybody else have any questions? Do our professionals have any questions?
I don't know.
Anybody from the public have any questions of this witness? Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
So, I'd like to present Mr. Mosley now to talk about the, the other issue I mentioned, which involves the timing for the school, how the school drop-off arrivals and pickups operate. The board had a number of good questions about how that operates, and we want to present some clarifications and some changes that we're proposing.
Mr. Mosley, you testified last time, so you remain under oath. Do you understand that?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. If you could just make sure you speak into the microphone for our record. Thank you.
Sure, no problem. Again, for the record, my name is Nathan Mosley. I'm with Shropshire Associates, traffic engineer for the project. So, we talked a lot about the, the school operations, the way they are today, the way that they're going to be in the future, and there were some questions raised regarding that. So, I'm going to go back over it a little bit and then talk about what we're doing, give you a little bit more information as well. So, the existing facility here, referring to A3, which is the current color rendering, the nursery school is up in the front along Mountain Avenue, obviously, with the new Pace Center going in the rear of the, of the facility. So, the way that the drop-offs work today for the school is the parents come in off of Mountain Avenue, they come to the rear, they park in here, they walk in the rear access doors, they walk through this building with their, with their child, with their, with the students, come up to the school, which is up here, drop them off, walk back out, get in their car, and they leave. So, today, it takes about three or four minutes, I would, I would estimate, for, you know, someone to be able to come in here and drop off their student and leave. So, what we're trying to do is to kind of, you know, streamline things a little bit, improve things for the nursery school, and also to separate traffic and operations between the new Pace Center traffic and then the traffic associated with the nursery school. I've had several conversations with the project team, as well as the director for the school. The school currently has three classes in the morning. There's a two-and-a-half-year-old class, there's a three-year-old class, and there's a pre-K class that meet in the morning. Those classes run from about nine fifteen or so till eleven-thirty. From eleven-thirty to twelve-thirty, they have a lunch period, and then from twelve-thirty to... From 11:30 to 12:30, they have a lunch period, and then from 12:30 to 2 o'clock, they have one afternoon class. Most of the students at the school today are there in the morning. About half of the students are in the three-year-old class, the other half of the students are in the two-and-a-half and pre-K classes. So the two-and-a-half-year-old class meets on Tuesdays and Thursdays only. The three-year-old class meets all five days of the week. However, students can choose to go to three sessions, they can choose to go to four, or they can choose to go to five. But they have to at least enroll in a minimum of three sessions during the week. And in the pre-K class, you can either choose a five-day option, all five days, or you can choose a three-day option, which would be Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. When talking with the director for the school, based on the way they handle classes now, looking at their enrollment over the past year, the busiest times for the school are Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday, middle of the week. Mondays and Fridays, there's about half as many students that come for classes as compared to Tuesdays and Thursdays. So we wanted to look at, you know, the Tuesday and Thursday, trying to get an idea on what the number of drop-offs are going to be, how it's going to operate, things like that. So the way it works today, where they just come in at 9 o'clock, they drop the students off, they come back. What we're going to do is we're going to modify the procedures and include this new drop-off area in the front. So we talked about it last time, but there's a new 18-foot-wide drop-off lane that's going to go in the front of the school area here that'll connect the inbound driveway and the outbound driveway for the existing school and church facility. The drop-off times are going to become staggered. In order to allow us to get people in and out quickly and orderly, the three-year-old class, which has the most students, those parents will be told that they need to arrive between 8:45 and 9 o'clock for drop-off of their students. The two-and-a-half-year-olds and the pre-K students, those parents will be told to drop off between 9:00 and 9:15. So that way, we don't have everybody coming in at the same specific time period. In addition to that, no longer will parents have to stop their car, park it, get out, get their child out, bring them into the school, come back out and leave. What the school's going to do is they're going to have two or three staff members that are going to be staged right up here along the curb. Those staff members are going to approach the vehicles. The parents are going to be told to have their children, if they're in car seats, on the passenger side of the car. They're going to be told to have those seats on that side of the car so they're easy to get to. The staff members will come up to the car, open the door, ask for permission to take the child out. They'll take the child out, they'll bring them back to another staff member in the building, who will then collect them, kind of distage them, and then get them to their, get them back to their classrooms. Our anticipation is, you know, once parents and children get used to it after a few days, a few drop-offs, is that in order to get them out of the car, back to the staging area, and for that staff member to get back, probably 30, 45 seconds or so. In the meantime, once this child is obviously out of the car, the parents are going to exit the facility and additional cars will be able to come in. By staggering it and giving us a 15-minute window for the three-year-old class and a 15-minute window for the two-and-a-half and pre-K classes, we have more than enough time for parents to be able to come in, to stop, drop their children off, and to get out, and handle the number of vehicles based on the number of students we have. Worst case, we're looking at probably 15, maybe 17 vehicles in a 15-minute period coming in and out, dropping off students. That would be on a busy Tuesday or Thursday time period. So in addition to that, there were some questions about the design for the drop-off area, so I wanted to give it a little bit more visual look. What I've done, and...
Up to A4.
A4.
If you could just describe what you're marking and then also what the date is on it. Appreciate it.
Yeah, there's no date on it.
All right.
We can put A state under A4 and X A4.
Yep, thanks. So what this is, this is a blow-up of the color rendering that was labeled A3, showing just the drop-off area. And what we've done is actually used a program to overlay vehicle blocks, templates into this to show how vehicles can stack and stage within the drop-off area, as well as how vehicles will be able to still bypass and circulate through here even when there are vehicles staged. So the design vehicle we use is called a passenger vehicle. It's seven feet wide and it's 19 feet long, so it's slightly bigger than a full-size extended Chevy Suburban, which I know was a question last time as far as how big those can be. Typical parking spaces, I think I told you last time, were about 9 by 18. These vehicles are designed at 7 by 19. With this design, we're able to stack four vehicles right up along the curb area in the front of the building. We're also able to stack an additional three vehicles if needed within the driveway, probably a fourth vehicle if people squeezed in, without going out onto Mountain Avenue as well. In addition to that, you can see we've shown that vehicles can go side-by-side through this area, which is 18 feet wide. They can still turn out and go around. And also, if there's any vehicles coming in and someone were to be staged here waiting, those vehicles going back to the PACE Center, the vans, the employee vehicles, whatever they may be, there'll be more than enough room for those vehicles to go by and go to the rear of the building as well. So I think we've, you know, designed this through not only the operations of the new pickup or drop-off policy, but also through the design of this staging area to allow for the needs of the school and the students that they have. I think there was one other thing I wanted to touch on was the gates. So there's going to be a gate here at the entrance area and the exit area, and the way those are going to work is that the school will have control over those. They're going to be opened prior to the drop-off pickup times, which will be from 8:45 to about 9:15, again at 11:30, again at 12:30, and again at 2:00. They'll be opened and shut by the school. They're not going to be open 24/7. They're going to close those when they're not being, you know, when the drop-off area's not in use. We don't want people to accidentally come in here and pull into the front without realizing where they're going. So only, those will only be open when students are being dropped off.
Can I ask a question about the gates?
Sure.
Mr. Mosley, when the gates are open, will the children all be in the school, or could some of them be gated within the playground? Or will they all be within the school? At any time, just the gates are open?
At any time the gates are open, there will be no children in the playground area. The school is going to keep everybody out of this area whenever the gates are open. So the only time the students would be here, it would be if the gates were already closed.
I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, it's okay. I think that was everything I was going to talk about. So, if you have any questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
So if somebody's child is in the school and they have a stomach ache and they call their parent, "Come pick me up," how do you envision that happening with the gates closed? How would somebody, a parent, come and pick up the child?
My understanding is that the school would then open the gate and allow the parent to come in and to pick up their student.
So if there's kids playing in the playground and somebody has to come, they...
They'll have to get them off the playground. My understanding is they're not going to be out there, yeah, when the gates are open.
They're going to take the whole bunch of kids off the playground because one kid's
I'm told that the playground time is actually, I envisioned it being a longer period of time, but it's a very specific designated period of time, and the children, so once they have their outdoor recess time, they're back in the building. So I don't envision it being a problem if they ask that parent to come either before that time or after it, or they truncated the outdoor time in a small respect to do that.
So the pickup and, well, the drop-offs and the pickups have been staggered now to try to eliminate any traffic building up on Mountain Avenue, correct?
They've been, yeah, staggered to keep people from backing up, but also to try and give a larger window for all the students to arrive so we don't have any issues on site.
Because then it leads to a stacking issue and so forth inside.
Well, we don't want people backing out on the Mountain Ave. That's our primary concern.
Neither do we.
To stack everybody on site and to process them quickly enough that as people arrive, they can pull up and then depart.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question about...
Sir.
Yeah, about the pickup, though, at the end of the day. So that is going to be staggered as well. I take it that the three-year-olds and two-year-olds will have different ending times? And then I would imagine that some of the parents may come ahead of time and park there and wait for their children to be escorted out of the building. How is that going to work?
So the parents, again, will be given a specific window for pickups. The primary time is at 11:30. That's when the morning classes end. However, not all the students leave at that point. Some of the students actually stay for lunch, and then they're actually picked up at 12:30 after the lunch. From my conversations with the director, only about half of the students are picked up at 11:30. The rest, some of the students remain for lunch. Some of the students actually go over to Walton for the afternoon, and they're walked across the street, so they're not picked up from a vehicle. So at 11:30, there may be another 10 to 15 cars that come in to pick up, but again, they'll have a specific window. It's going to be less than the drop-offs in the morning even. And then there'll be another smaller pickup at 12:30 after lunch, when there's a few more students picked up then. And then at 2 o'clock, there's very few students in the afternoon anyway, so there won't be many.
So the procedure will be reversed, is that they will be escorted by the staff?
Yes. Yes, they'll be brought out and put in the car.
And the latest pickup is 2 o'clock?
Yes, 2 o'clock.
And someone's putting a kid in a car seat?
Yes.
What's the traffic flow to get to the PACE Center?
As far as the...
It's, I'm just looking at the aerial here, but so I'm just trying to...
This is the existing driveway here, if you can see it outlined. It's this area. So this is the inbound driveway. So the PACE Center, you just would go into the property and then back around to the rear. This is the outbound driveway over here, so they'd be coming back around. So most of the PACE employees, they arrive around 8 o'clock in the morning, and they depart about 5 o'clock in the afternoon. So they won't really be coming in or out at the same time as the school drop-offs and pickups.
And how much space is there from where those gates are to where the, on the bottom part of that picture?
Here.
So this is the inbound here, right? So where you're drawing here with your finger is...
Yes.
Coming into parking lot.
Correct. Yeah, this is the existing driveway.
And then, so in that gray area is where they would circle around to drop off their kids?
Yeah, and they come into here, drop off.
How much space is, is...
From here.
Where the, in that area over there? So I'm looking, it looks like there's, those red things look like cars, right?
The red things are the cars going by the, I tried to make them blue, but the blue things are the cars that would potentially stack. So each car is 19 feet long, so there's probably about 70 feet from the gates to the, kind of where the sidewalk area is today.
And how wide is that, that part?
This area, I don't have the specific dimension on the plan. It has to be approximately, it's got to be about 18 feet wide, because the vehicles themselves are seven feet wide. And we have some room in between to pass.
Do you envision that being a striped area so that people would have, know what lane to be in? Because I, it's pretty narrow, so I can't imagine, you know, if somebody pulls in there and...
We don't have any striping currently proposed. My anticipation is that they'll be able to move vehicles fairly quickly through here.
I'm talking about if somebody's coming into the PACE Center, somebody's parking to wait for their kids. I can envision a situation where if somebody is not over and up to the left, that people can't get by him to get into the PACE Center.
Yeah, I mean, you know, if it's a concern, I'm sure we can look at putting some striping to divide that area.
Anybody else have any more questions? I think we talked about this last time, but is there, are there catering facilities?
No, you know, and I can bring the witness up again, but I'll just proffer it for you. All meals are prepared off-site, so they're just brought on-site. I think it's a continental breakfast, like muffins and maybe some yogurt and stuff like that, and a lunch, but it's all prepared off-site.
So it wouldn't be any reason for any large delivery vehicles that are...
No, no. And they do have, you know, you heard testimony last time about they do have, like, kitchen facilities there, but that's really just to help prepare the pre-prepared meals, I guess, to serve and to set up the continental breakfast. And before there's any more questions, before my planner gets even madder at me, I forgot, I do have my professional planner with me here tonight. He did not testify at all last time, so as a part of my direct testimony, I also have my planner who hasn't testified yet. I just wanted to mention that.
Any questions with the professionals?
No. I feel like they, the concerns that we had at the last meeting, they seem to have addressed, brought up some good alternatives here. I don't want anything additional.
Is there anybody from the public that would like to come forward to ask any questions of the professional? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Kyle has not been sworn.
Okay, I'll swear again. Do you swear a testimony you're about to give, and any evidence you presented to the board is the truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you. Please state your name for the record, spell your last name, and then give your business address.
Sure. First name is James, last name Kyle, K-Y-L-E. Business address is PO Box 236 in Hopewell, New Jersey, 08525.
Kyle, can you briefly describe for the board your education and your work experience as a professional planner?
Sure. I have a Bachelor of Science in Environmental Planning and Design from Rutgers, which I received in 1996. I've been a practicing planner for about 20 years, currently advise a number of boards such as this, working in six municipalities as a consultant. I've been qualified as an expert in planning before over 180 boards in the state, also Superior Court in Somerville, licensed professional planner by the state of New Jersey, also a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners.
If there's any questions about qualifications, I'd be glad to entertain those, otherwise I'd offer him as an...
Your licenses are in full force at this point?
They are.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
We can accept this as a good counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And Mr. Kyle, I want to confirm. You were a present at the last hearing.
I was. I heard all the testimony at the last meeting.
You heard all the testimony at the last hearing. You heard the testimony tonight.
I did.
You understand that there's certain variance relief that our engineers mentioned is necessary for the application?
Mm-hmm.
So I'd like you to describe for the board, under the municipal land use law, what burden is an applicant under regarding such relief, and whether, in your opinion, you think the proposals met the burden?
Okay, I'll do that. I just want to pass out one exhibit, though, before I start, and I think we're at A5.
Oh, sure, absolutely. Which one are we going to, we're going to mark one for the record?
Sure, we'll mark it as A5, I guess.
Which one do you want to actually mark? Just want to make sure you, okay, you have, okay, great. Can you describe what's been marked as A5?
I can. So this is a 2015 aerial photo and tax parcel base map, depicts the subject property Block 2901, Lot 75, outlined in yellow. This map was prepared in advance of the last hearing on June 18th by me personally, and it just depicts some geographic information system data that's available from the state, shows the site outlined in yellow again, and in the surroundings, you see Kimberly Court to the south, and then the Walton School there off to the northeast. So up on this map is north, down south, left is west, east is right. So this just orients the board to the surrounding uses. You see Balthus Royal Golf Course across Mountain Avenue. You see some homes along Kimberly Court to the south, and then the Walton School. There's also two residential units that are located on Block 2901, Lot 77 and 76, directly to our north. Those little white numbers, that's the block, and then the comma and the lot is immediately below it. And what I'll do is I'm going to reference this a little bit in my testimony on the variances that are required, so I just wanted to get it in your hands before I started. So just to let the board know what I did in preparation for the hearing, as I do with all cases, I reviewed the site plan that was prepared by Mr. Jeffress, also reviewed some traffic information, met with the team, and we discussed the application operations, things of that nature, reviewed the township zoning ordinance, as well as master plan, and also conducted site inspection of the site on two occasions. So this lot is located in the S-75 single-family residential zone. Some of the permitted uses include single-family dwelling, church or other place of worship, parish house, Sunday school, church, school, municipal building or use, public school, park, playground, or other public or quasi-public use, and community residences for the developmentally disabled. The PACE Center that we've described at the prior hearing and the operations that we've talked about tonight is not specifically permitted in the zoning district, so we do require a D1 use variance for that. There are also two bulk variances that we're seeking as well. One related to maximum lot coverage. 27% is what's permitted in the zone. Today, on the ground, we have about 76.7%, and we're proposing to increase that slightly to 80.4. As Mr. Jeffress described at the last hearing, that's largely related to the circular drive that we're adding in the front to facilitate the drop-off for the school. And then finally, the other bulk variance is for the minimum amount of landscaping in the parking area, 5% is required. We have 1.95% today, and we're going to increase that to 2.5%. But technically, since we're not meeting the 5%, a bulk variance would be required. So as to the D1 variance, as the board's heard many times, we're required to demonstrate both the positive and the negative criteria. Now, the approach that I've taken, and as Mr. Michaels alluded to in his planning review, is that this use is inherently beneficial. When you make that determination or you take that basis, the criteria that we use for a D1 variance are slightly modified. The legal test is, I'll say, a little bit lesser than you would have for a typical commercial use, that you would need a D1 variance. So the courts, in a case, CICA v. Wall Board of Adjustment, determined that for a use that's inherently beneficial, essentially the positive criteria are satisfied, presumptively satisfied, because the use at its core... because the use at its core promotes the general welfare. So back in 2009, the legislature amended the municipal land use law, and they included a definition of inherently beneficial use, which is a use which is universally considered of value to the community because it fundamentally serves the public good and promotes the general welfare. Such a use includes, but is not limited to, a hospital, school, childcare center, group home, or a wind, solar, or photovoltaic energy facility or structure. So again, the key is, you know, include but is not limited to. So if you look at the nature of this use, as was described at the prior hearing, it's intended to serve a segment of the population that's underserved, the frail, those of low income. I think it's pretty clear...it's licensed as a center by the state, so I think it's pretty clear that this use qualifies as one that would be inherently beneficial just because of the service that it provides to the community. So I think the positive criteria in this case is presumptively satisfied. And as part of that, we also don't have to demonstrate that the site's particularly suited to the proposed use. So that's part of the modification in CECA. So on the negative criteria, as opposed to...it's still a two-part test, but there's a balancing test that was outlined in the CECA case. We use those...that four-part test to judge if there's any substantial detriment to the public good. So the first part of the test is identifying any detrimental effects...I'm sorry. Identifying the public interest at stake and realizing that some uses are more compelling than others. Two, identify any detrimental effects that could ensue from the grant to the variance. Third, any conditions that the board can impose that would reduce those detrimental effects. And then, of course, in the balancing, you're lessening the weight of those detrimental effects if you can impose conditions on them to lessen them. And then finally, balancing the positive aspects, the public welfare benefit versus the negatives. And if the positives outweigh, then there's no substantial detriment to the public good. So just to walk through my analysis on the CECA test, in terms of the public interest at stake, this is really an underserved market for the area and for the state in general. These facilities provide, as was described...it helps assist caregivers during normal daytime hours. So if you have an elderly, you have a mom or a dad that's home with you normally during the week and you have to work, this gives an option for seniors to attend, and they can receive care. It also serves low-income, frail, and those that live alone. And that's really a portion of the population that's very important to reach. It also provides a social aspect, so people can come together with peers and they can socialize while they're in the environment, which is important. And it also provides wellness services, as was described. We'll have medical staff on-site. They're also receiving meals during the day, breakfast and lunch, and then if they need any medications administered, things like that. So overall, when you look at the scope of services that this facility will provide to area residents, I think the public interest that it serves is very compelling. As our population continues to age, you know, with working families, trying to take care or be a caregiver for an elderly parent is difficult, and this really provides an option that'll help ease that burden. So I think that the public interest at stake here is rather compelling. Any detrimental effects that could ensue from the grant to the variance? Again, nearly one hundred percent of the participants that come to the facility on a daily basis will be brought by van. So we have very little generated in the way of traffic, other than for staff members that will be coming to the site. Operations are Monday through Friday, so no weekend hours. Generally reasonable hours from eight to five, so no late nights, no weekends where, you know, people will be out there. So it's a normal business day, which would tend to reduce any potential detrimental effects on some of the surrounding homes that we have. If you look at the aerial, those dwellings along Kimberly Court, and also the dwellings that are up on Mountain Ave as well. As we've described, and we've gone to great lengths to ensure that there's no conflict with the preschool, so we've worked diligently to work with staff and make some programmatic changes so that we can address any of those potential conflicts that we have there. Also, there's no onsite cooking or food prep, so all that food that will be brought in is not gonna be cooked on-site. So there's little in the way of concern as far as odors and smoke that might occur if we had daily food prep occurring on the site, so I think that addresses that. There's also no significant deliveries that will occur to the site, other than the daily meal deliveries and the vans coming and going. So I think overall, when you look at this use, the days of the week and the hours of operation, I can think safely say, based on the changes that we've made, that there should be little substantial impact or detriment from the grant to the variance in this case. Any conditions that the board can place on the use? Again, we've talked about lighting modifications to address the spillover. That was in your engineer's letter. We've agreed to do that. And then some of the things that we've talked about tonight. While we've presented an exhibit, I think it's appropriate for the board to make these conditions of the approval, since we've offered. That's removal of the five van spaces to increase the parking. The fencing at six foot, as described, and an important aspect of that is, as Mr. Jeffress described, the...you know, the board's budding, the fence going all the way to the ground. That's really gonna help to trap that noise from the generator when it's running inside that area and reduce that impact. We've talked about the staggering of the drop-offs for the preschool, so we would agree to that as a condition. That'll go a long way to improving circulation and any concerns that the board have. And then also the additional landscaping that Mr. Jeffress described. We will agree to work with your board engineer and planner to address the additional landscaping that was discussed. I think overall, when you look at the balancing test and you look at the public benefit that this facility will provide for the area, I think that the positive far outweighs any of the potential negatives and that there are conditions that we can place or the board can place to reduce those detrimental effects. So I think it amounts to, you know, detrimental impacts that we can address through conditions. And I think in this case, the benefit of this application far outweighs any potential negatives, and there's no substantial detriment to the public good. Now, while we're not required to address the enhanced burden of proof under Medici, I did want to just talk about the master plan quickly. I did review it. The ordinance cites the purposes of the municipal land use law as those that are in its intent and purpose. And reading through the master plan, you know, a lot of the focus there was really on downtown revitalization and redevelopment, affordable housing and Route 22, traffic and uses there. So when you look at a proposal like this, in the location, I think with the hours that we've described and the way the operation will go, I think we can say there's no substantial impact to the intent, purpose of the zone plan with this proposal. So I think we can meet both the positive and the negative criteria for the grant to the variance. Now, the two variances, bulk variances, I just want to address quickly. As far as the coverage, I think this would qualify as a C2 in that the purposes of zoning would be promoted and the benefits outweigh the detriments. The one that comes to mind for me is really Purpose A. So the additional coverage that we're seeking, as we said, was to install that circular drive at the front. So this is really gonna allow us to help separate the traffic from the preschool to that of the PACE Center, so that will be a benefit of safety to, you know, kids that are going to the school, also parents dropping off, helping us, as Nathan said, to separate that traffic so that we don't have any potential conflicts. With this on the negative, I don't think there's any substantial impact to the surrounding properties. Mr. Jeffress described it's...it amounts to a pretty nominal increase in the impervious, but the stormwater will not be impacted by this additional increase that we have. It'll function the way it does today. We're also adding that dry well that was in the front, so that'll help mitigate that increase in the impervious and help get some of that groundwater back into the ground. And then, when we look at the intent, purpose of the zone plan with coverage, I think it's generally twofold. First, I'll say it's very difficult with this facility to meet a residential coverage standard of twenty-seven percent. So I think part of what the board's considering in the use variance is, you know, an appropriate standard that we could judge this by. To me, impervious is a twofold issue. It's stormwater, but it's also the appearance of the site. So you'll note that most of the impervious coverage with the site is at the rear of the building. It's out of sight, so what people perceive as they drive by on Mountain Avenue is not really gonna change too much. We're gonna add some landscaping, some trees in the front that'll help mitigate that. So I think overall, it won't result in an overdeveloped appearance, and we can address the stormwater with the addition of the dry well. And in terms of the minimum parking lot landscaping, I think this clearly qualifies as a C1. As Mr. Jeffress had described, we have an existing stormwater management facility that's underneath the parking lot in the rear. From a practical perspective, we can't put landscape islands above that stormwater management facility. I think if we could do that, we could comfortably comply with the requirements, but I think a hardship clearly exists. No substantial impact to surrounding properties on this as we're increasing over the existing condition, the landscaping that we're putting in, although we're not meeting the five percent standard, so it is an improvement over what's there today. And then, again, with the intent, purpose of the zone plan, this is likely something that's intended to address the appearance of the parking area. And from a practical perspective, not being able to meet that, we're gonna try to add some landscaping in other areas of the site to kind of help offset for that loss. So I think there's no substantial impact to the intent of that standard. So overall, I think we can meet the positive and the negative for the two bulk variances as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kyle. Are there any questions for Mr. Kyle?
I have a few questions. I'm not sure if the...
I will try.
What is the ratio of required staff to patients or...
That I'm gonna have to defer to another witness. I don't have the ability to answer that.
If I can ask my civil engineer... So I'll have to...I don't believe there are specific licensing requirements, but I'm gonna ask our operational consultant to just confirm. I'm correct. There are no state licensing for these facilities, as you've heard that's wrong. Is it licensed facility? So there...I'm sorry, there are no licensing requirements on a staff ratio. The ratio that was created for this proposal is based on the other facilities that are operated by the applicant.
Which is typically what?
I have to proffer again what the max participant on any given day would be. I don't recall that testimony. I'd have to ask our witness to again briefly mention that for you. So just so we understand, the question was, how many...if I'm correct, how many max participants would you expect to see once the project is fully built out? And what the ratio of participants to employees would be during that max time?
Hi.
Hi.
I'll swear you in, ma'am.
I testified last.
Sure. So just if you'll just agree...I know, there was a long list. You'll just agree that you remain under oath. You understand that?
I do.
Okay, thank you. Could you also give your name for the record?
Sherri Outten, O-U-T-T-E-N.
So Ms. Outten, you've heard the question. You understand the question?
I understand the question. I don't know that I can...I will answer it this way. When we proposed the number of participants that would be maximum at the center, it was based on space. And it's a little over a hundred, is my recollection. What we did was, it was basically, we took a formula that we had from our current PACE Center in Jersey City, and we developed a proportion, and so we're using the same proportion for our new facility.
So looking at the original plan, it was...it was one employee per two participants?
Approximately, because it's a little over a hundred, and we're proposing fifty employees. I was not the person who did that, but generally speaking, yes, that's how we did it.
Okay. And then what's the max capacity for this facility? It's a smashing success. How many people would be in this?
I don't have that number on me, but I believe Mary does.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
I believe she does.
That's another witness, so...
Sorry, I...
That's okay. I think she's just looking through her...
I think she's looking for...
So let me ask another question, Mark. Sorry, I don't know who the right people to ask to answer these, but the...what is the length? This is probably for the traffic engineer?
Mr. Mosley, yeah.
Mr. Mosley. What is the length of the circle? Right, so you said seventy feet from the gate to the street, but what is that gray area?
From here to there?
Yeah.
So this area curb line is about eighty feet.
And you were figuring that an average vehicle was nineteen feet long?
We used a template that had a nineteen-foot-long vehicle, which is your Chevy Suburban-style vehicle.
And eighty feet is the circle?
Eighty feet along the curb area, yes.
Okay. Now, this question is for the school director.
Yeah.
So, let's see, over here?
Hi, ma'am. You testified last time, so you remain under oath. Thank you.
Yes.
You were sworn last.
Yes, I was.
Could you give your name for the record, too?
Karen Evers, E-V-E-R-S.
Thank you.
What is the attendance of the school right now?
Well, it's summer session. We're basing our numbers on the last year. We had a total of thirty-seven.
Okay, thirty-seven. What's the max capacity of the school?
I'd have to look at our license for that exactly. I know it's...
What has historically been the greatest occupancy of your school?
Oh, this...the past year, this is since I've been here now for about five years. That's pretty much been our biggest.
Okay. Could you guess what you think the max capacity of the school is?
How many square feet is the school? How many square feet are the classrooms? It goes by...the state standard goes by square footage, right?
Yeah, we're...
I believe...
We're way above what's required.
We also have limits based on the number of teachers in the classroom, correct?
Yes.
So let me just ask you, because I know we had just talked about this previously. So you have a three-year-old, a class for three-year-olds, right?
Right.
And you'd have two teachers in that classroom. Is it correct that the maximum in that classroom would be sixteen?
Yes.
And if the next classroom is pre-K? Pre-K, you have two teachers in pre-K also. Is it correct that the max for pre-K would be twenty?
Right.
And for the two-and-a-half-year-olds, is it correct that with two teachers in the room, is it correct the max would be ten students?
Yes.
Okay. So I believe those are max.
Those would be the max, yeah.
Based on...
So it's approximately forty-six. Forty-six children.
That would be the maximum, that's right.
You're at thirty-seven, okay. And that's a...and at forty-six requires another teacher?
Once you reach those maximums, which we would agree as a cap, as part of this application, if the board chose to approve this, we would agree to that as a cap. But right, if you were going above that, you might also require additional space, but you would definitely acquire an additional teacher in the room, which we won't have.
Well, I'm gonna leave the state to figure out what they need, but my concern is around the parking.
Right, so we would agree to that as a cap.
We have the afternoon if we need classes, because right now we only have the one, so...
Right. But absolutely, we understand that there has to be restrictions on what could potentially happen in the future with the school, and we would agree.
I have a question. There was a discussion about different age kids get dropped off based on the time. Are there any parents that have kids that are in more than multiple classes? Like, what happens with them?
Yes, that could...that could happen. It's probably two, three the most, and they would just have both of their kids get out at the same time. We would develop guidelines for that and how that would be handled.
And we owe you an answer on... Oh, I'm sorry.
It's one hundred.
What was the question?
Yeah. What was the question?
The max for the PACE Center.
The PACE Center.
I just want to make sure.
I'm glad you said that.
There's a lot of questions that went back and forth. I have a question. If we were to approve this application, and for some reason, the PACE Center didn't work out, and it went someplace else, whatever the case is, we would...how would you feel about stipulating that if they wanted to put something else in there, they'd have to come back again?
Well, I think they'd probably be required to come back again. It's a commercial use, a change in use. I mean, I guess if another PACE operator came in and said, "I'm gonna operate another PACE for center," just like you did, maybe they wouldn't, but I think they might be required to anyway. And if you wanted a stipulation that if...even if it was another PACE operator, I believe that wouldn't be a problem. We'd agree to that. But I think they'd have.
If it occurs, I wish them all success, but just, you know, we have to keep that in mind.
No, no, we would...that would be fine. That would be fine.
Okay.
I think that if it's...if we choose to approve this, there should be some stipulation about delineating the travel lanes coming in and out to...
The striping. Yes, yes, I have that note. Yes.
Striping some arrows, perhaps, you know?
We would agree to that.
School and center, so they know which lane to get into.
And we would propose, if it's acceptable to the board, to add that to the plan and make sure it's acceptable to the board engineer as to any minor details on that, but to add it.
Any other questions?
I think that, you know, we'd have to define the max participants for the school, for the...
Well, right now, it's kind of capped at about forty-six.
Well, there's forty-five spots, right? There's fifty employees at a hundred. There's seven teachers, right? So we're, you know, at max capacity, you're short on the spots.
No, I think we're over by...we have four extra at max capacity. But I understand your comment, but we still have four X. But, I, I understand your comment, but we're, we still have four X.
I understand what question's being asked, because now, I, I think the question that's being raised is, when you, when, when the engineer spoke about the vans being parked off-site, and now we're gonna have a surplus of spots by approximately four, was that including the reverend parking his car there, and the teachers parking their cars there? Was that included?
Yeah.
Because I, I, I get the, the question.
I'll clarify, right, right. So, if, if all the forty-five employees come, all of them, at the exact same time, if none of them carpool, if none of them use public transportation, and if the ones that come at different times of the day all decide to come at the same time of the day, that'd be forty-five spaces. If the two vans that park there happen to go park in their spaces, then you'd have the two vans parked there. And if the seven teachers were all there at the same time, which they're not, some leave for lunch, and then after lunch even more leave, but if they were all there at the same time, you'd then have four empty spaces. So in reality, we'll have.
How many spots are there, sorry?
In, in the back, there are fifty-eight total spots, two of which are vans, three of which are cars, in the back. What's there, does it need to have parking stalls?
Thirty-seven, right. But yeah, I'm sorry if it was confusing. So, we've intentionally, I think the way they've modified the program and moved vehicles off-site, they, I think they have a healthy buffer for parking.
So, back to Mr. Mosley. There's, so, so, so you, you've suggested that there's sixteen in one class, twenty in ten?
Those, those were the maximums. Those are the maximums.
Does your plan call for someone to have a specific time to drop off their kids? Because if we assume that they all are driving Suburbans, you have four, you have four cars that can stack, and then another, another three, right? But you've got twice as much, there's another nine people that would be on Mountain Avenue, showing up at the same time for their class.
So we, our plan shows the available section, the anticipation is that, you know, at eight forty-five, at nine o'clock, whatever time it's, you know, the students are gonna get out of these vehicles, and these vehicles are gonna go out, and the next three or four are gonna pull in. And that within the fifteen-minute interval that we've designated, that we'll be able to accommodate all those vehicles. I don't think everyone's gonna show up at exactly eight forty-five. I know I never get my child to the date, to the drop-off exactly when it begins, but within that window, we'll have more than enough time to process all the students in without having them back out onto Mountain Avenue. Because of the way that we're gonna be staggering, the fact that we're gonna stagger some of the class times, and the fact that the, the staff and the teachers will be waiting here to pick them up, and walk them in, we'll be able to quickly get everybody in.
And Mr. Mosley, did you mention earlier, you observed, granted, it was a different drop-off procedure, but you observed the drop-off and pickup times at the site in operation, in preparation for the application?
Yes, I did observe the existing drop-offs for the, the school. I think it was, it was the two derelries that was out there, as well as the operations of the Walden School, to see how that impacts things.
Okay.
And I may, one of, sorry, and I may just say to support that, when we did our traffic counts, we did count the vehicles coming in through the driveway during that drop-off period, and they were not all arriving at exactly nine o'clock. They were, there were vehicles separated between the nine and nine fifteen, as well as even after nine fifteen, there were a few vehicles coming in as well.
Any further questions? Is there anybody from the public that would like to be heard now?
I, can I say something?
Sure.
So, I just, on the record, while I appreciate the separation of the two, I'm not entirely sure that granting the additional impervious coverage to allow for that access is, the benefits are gonna outweigh the detriment. I still see idling. I, I just, even if it's fifteen minutes, I see cars sitting there for fifteen minutes for pickup. I, I don't, I, I don't know if this puts a significant dent in your plan, but I almost think that maybe just take away that whole section, leave it as it is, you have the additional greenery, and just have a drop-off program in the back. I, I don't know. That's my opinion, but.
Well, I, I, I'll, I'll also mention, and, and I'll ask the director to come up, the director wants to address that also, but the, the parents, as many of you probably know from experience, the, the program will set out written rules and procedures for all the parents that have to follow. And it's not just for the benefit of that one parent, it's the benefit, so the school can operate for the benefit of all the other parents. And obviously, sometimes parents need to be corrected or reminded, but it's happened in the past, I don't believe under this director, but under other directors, there's been parents that haven't been able to follow the rules, and they've been asked to go to another school. And maybe they're happier at another school, cause maybe this one isn't a good fit. But the school, it's important to the school to make sure that one person who, for whatever reason, needs something different, doesn't damage the system that's working for everybody else that enjoys it exactly the way it is. But I'll ask Mr., Ms. Evers to, to briefly, to talk about what you said.
Um, I think I mentioned it last time also, but the state requires us to be separate from any other organization that's in the building, so that's why we can't continue coming in through the back. That's going to be the entrance for the Pace program. It has to be a separate entrance. Can I also just make, make one comment? I know we're talking about numbers before, and you were, were mentioning about the maximum, and it could be up to forty-six. Our program, our children all aren't there on the same, the same day. So, it, that would be the absolute most, but, you know, we have one program that's only two days a week. And then, like, our three-year-old, they get to pick the day. So, there's not that, that number. That's the total amount of kids in the whole school. Just so you understand that. Okay.
So, so even if you had your twenty max in pre-K, they may not be doing all five days?
Right, they have the option of doing a three days or five days, so you're not gonna have all twenty.
Okay, but it.
Is the fire lane, that, the lane on the side, is that wide enough for two cars? Where drop-off could be on the side, and the circulation could be all the way around the back and out?
You're talking about here?
Yes. Mm-hmm.
Yeah, this is wide enough. We've shown that you can have two vehicles side-by-side in this area.
Right, so where the existing nursery school, right, cause the.
That's the area up here.
No, the actual school, right? You're talking about separation, right? So the school is, right, so can drop-off be on the side, and then the, can, the cars continue around? I mean, actually, that, that may not even.
That would back, that would be worse.
That may not even help the idling.
That's, that's worse.
On, on, on your question, is there, is there a wide enough lane on the, on the, I guess it would be the north side, that you could have traffic side-by-side, that maybe the people who are dropping off, this, the nursery school kids could go around the building, and they could stack up against the building and drop them off, and line up there, so they wouldn't be on Mountain Avenue?
To any given point.
If I may, all these questions are, are very pertinent, and things that we looked at, we originally designed this, we originally were not anticipating a drop-off, we were anticipating kind of the long same line, is whether or not the school could drop off in here.
Not that side, but the other side.
No, if you went all the way around the building.
Understanding, we originally looked at this side, and the problem there is, the students getting, or the kids getting out of the passenger side, now having to cross the road in front or behind the vehicle, with cars going around.
Oh, you have it on the other side.
Going around this, going around this side, you have the same issue, but you also now have potential for cars coming out of the school and exiting. So we got into that situation where, how do you safely accommodate a drop-off for the nursery school, while now accommodating a use back here? And that's what prompted us to look at this drop-off, to be able to separate that, so that when the students are dropped off, they're dropped off to the passenger side, onto a dedicated sidewalk, and right in, right into the school. We looked at that really from a safety perspective.
Couldn't you have the child exit from the driver's side of the car?
I'm sorry, can you, is that what you?
Yeah, can you?
Technically, you can, but we, in this particular case, because this is a dedicated drop-off, the, the intent, and in most cases, the, the child will get out of the passenger side. Now, could they get out of the driver's side? Sure. But in that particular case, you don't have the traffic for the Pace Center potentially coming through when that's occurring, and passing that vehicle. So we looked at that from a safety perspective, as this is a much more controlled situation if that were to occur. But generally, when you provide a drop-off where the child can get off of the passenger side, the parent would want them out of the passengers. And then with the staff that's going to assist, that would more likely encourage that situation more commonly.
Yeah, I just feel like it, I would say again, too, just on the record, I feel like again, it's, to depend on someone to have to walk out and open that gate every single time someone's gotta pull in there, I, I think it's a little bit of a tall ask.
I'd like to, the pastor wanted to briefly comment on, I guess we're talking about the stacking and the ability of the cars to get in there and get out safely and properly. So, so I'd like to ask the pastor who was previously sworn to, to briefly address what else the applicant might be able to do to help make sure that's not, doesn't become a problem.
Yeah, sure. Thank you. We were sworn in last time.
Can you just state your name again?
Yeah, yeah. Dave Connect, I'm one-seven-five Hawthorne Avenue, I'm pastor of Holy Cross Lutheran Church. We would definitely, as the church and as the landlord, and the school is not separately incorporated, so actually, the director answers to me. I'm the director supervisor. So if there were stipulations about drop-off, and we needed additional time for drop-off, we are happy to accommodate those for the board.
So Pastor, if it just, so, so if, if it became a problem, if the queuing became a problem, like there's some concern, could become a problem, could you adjust classroom schedules even further to make sure that there's additional stagger?
Of course.
Appropriate additional staggering? I know it creates, logistically, it, it's a rearrangement for the school, but could you stagger it further at a later date?
Yes.
If the stacking became a problem?
Yes.
I, I mean, you've heard how the little bit of staggering that we've posed now could provide a benefit, and if, if they had to, the school could ultimately stagger even more if it became a problem.
And we're a small, we're a small Christian school, we are not interested in growing too much. Our niche is actually kind of to be different from the public school, in that we give small one-on-one attention with small class sizes. We, we're not looking to, we're not looking to grow, we're, we're, we're perfectly fine with having three classes in the morning and having any expansion in the afternoon when there's, when there's less activity. Because for us, for, for us, we're not, our school doesn't make money. We are a profit, nonprofit. We are about Christian education, we're about introducing a spiritual life for the children of our school, that is our mission, which will mean we'll be small. We are not in a majority Lutheran town. We have a, we have a small niche market for us to do this. The Pace Center works well with that, because we want to be able to be a place where the generations can come together. And so, we are willing to make exceptions, make restrictions for the school, in order that the Pace Center may come, because we feel that the Pace Center is part of our continued mission here, to help make Springfield a better place for everybody. So, we're here to help people, and we feel that both the school and the Pace Center will really help people in this community, and that's, and so we're, we're willing to do what it takes to help get this through, because we wanna help people.
Thank you, thank you. Are there any questions for the pastor, or, and anything we've discussed so far?
No, I, I guess, you know, like, one of the things is, how does this get police to ensure that these issues don't happen and so forth? I think that's a, that's a concern. I mean, I, I, I think the parking's been addressed, I don't think that that's an issue. You know, the shrubbery, that's been addressed, that'll be, that'll be handled. It, it's the children, the drop-off, the stacking, I think that's the, the issue that the board is still kinda conflicted with. And it's, I mean, all intentions are good, I understand that, but how do we police it to make sure that it's actually occurring and working? That, I think, is a, a problem, that we just have, are wrestling with. I mean, everybody's kinda shaking their head, and that's, that's, that's our, that's our, our, our issue.
I could talk, I don't know, I don't really have authority for this, but we could also agree as things start to develop, because as you say, there's sort of a testing-out period, to cap the class sizes, I can see if the applicant be willing to cap the class sizes.
I don't think it's, I don't, that's, that's not the issue.
I mean, I mean, at a lower, at a lower number, at the number they were at now.
It's, it's the, the dropping off, and not, not so much the picking up, because that is definitely way more staggering. But the dropping off in the morning, I mean, fifteen minutes is not a, a whole lot of time.
Mm-hmm.
And whose kids are running late, and all of a sudden, they're, you know, eight forty-five to nine becomes nine oh-five, now they're in, you know, that's, that's the, the, the issue, you know?
It's more the issue of the cars being backed up onto Mountain Avenue.
Right, right.
We understand, no, we understand, that's a prime concern of ours also, I mean.
I don't think you capping class sizes is really gonna help that, though, the outset, just don't see it.
Well, I, I think our experts have testified that there's adequate room in the drive aisle, based on the flow of traffic they've observed, even without the staggering, to clear that traffic. If you look at the school next door, and you look at their stacking, even though they have a lot of stacking lanes, if you looked at the number of students they have, you would see, they clearly can't stack their student population, the parents there. In other words, that flow happens quickly and spreads over a short period of time also. So, we may not have space to stack every parent at the exact same time, but I don't believe any schools really frequently have that. And, and they, they operate, I mean, we would agree to submit a study and have our traffic expert do counts again, after the facility's in operation, if, if you're, if you're planning.
How do we police to a certain extent?
Sam and I just discussed, it's, under, under Sam, Sam's department is a zoning officer. Once this gets going, have him go out on a couple of peak mornings here, over, over time, you know, Tuesday, Wednesday, you'll do over.
Right.
In the morning, observe what's going on, is there any backup on the Mountain Avenue?
Okay.
And it's just, it's a way to.
And then it would have to spread the staggering.
It needs to be monitored, though, so that we know that it's working, and that everybody's safe and so forth.
Just, just for the record, I mean, the zoning officer, one of his responsibilities is to make sure that any approval granted by any of the boards is followed, and if they're not, then he will address it.
Okay. And if our traffic expert, if we needed to pay our traffic expert to, if your zoning officer said, "You know, I'm gonna do this again next week, I want your traffic expert with me," if they contacted us, we would agree to make sure, pay our traffic expert to be available.
It's the stagger times, we'll have to see if fifteen minute works.
Exactly.
Not fifteen, it might be twenty, if it's not twenty, it might have to be twenty-five, but that's what we have, that's the, that seems to be the main issue that you could see from all phases.
And I believe our director, our pastor, has flexibility to address that.
No, I, I understand, I understand.
And would be more than willing to do that.
And, and just, I just wanted to add this one thing, we've been running a nursery school since the nineteen, early nineteen sixties. Karen is a highly qualified professional. All of our, our teachers exceed, exceed their qualifications, and we've been doing this a long time. So, I, I expect that if there are stipulations that are made by you all in good faith, our folks can handle them, because we've been doing this a very long time, and I, I respect our people. They, they do a good job. And, and we'll, we'll make sure that that happens, and I'm, that's all I can say, thanks.
Anybody have any other questions?
I, I just have one question of Mr. Jeffers. He characterized the generator as being standby and not emergency, I'm not sure I understand that distinction.
Yeah, at the next board meeting, there was discussion about the generator. The generator is put in as a convenience, it's a standby generator that will service the new elevator, refrigerator freezers, and some of the heating and AC units, if, in the event that the electric food facility goes out.
So it really is emergency, then, if the?
Well, it's not required as an emergency generator per se, it's a standby, really for the convenience. It's not technically required for the facility, it's being provided for the convenience of the operation of the facility.
Okay.
Does it make a difference whether you call it a standby or an emergency generator?
I think it's a technical term that really means.
I don't know, I'm asking the question.
Whether it's required for the facility, really. It's, it's not a required under the license, I guess, is a better way to indicate it.
It just sounds like you need it for the elevators to get the people out who are on wheelchairs.
The elevators, and, you know, since it's there, the food equipment, I mean, we asked our client if they would operate the facility, if they couldn't have a generator, and, and they felt that it would just be too problematic. and, and they felt that it would just be too problematic with, with the elevators and getting people out. And also, I think you heard testimony, if the power goes out, it might take a while to get them all out to the van, so they'd like to keep, I think some air conditioning might stay on in the main room, try to keep the elderly people cool or warm, I guess, depending on...
Okay. Once more, any questions? Okay, um, I, I'm gonna go ahead and say that we should go ahead and grant this with a number of stipulations and so forth that have been discussed as we've gone through the application. I, I think, um, in, in granting the, the variance or putting it up for a, a decision here, the parking's been agreed to, that the vans are gonna be parked off-site. There, there has to be striping in the, um, in the driveway, designating with arrows, which is, which lane is for what, and so forth. And, and then the biggest thing is that the monitoring of the drop-off times, more so than the, than the pickups, but the drop-offs, that it's, uh, it's staggered properly, and that the parents are working within the windows, that they're, that they're given to work in. What else?
I have several others from our previous...
Right, I know there's a...
Yeah, so the applicant will have staff members to regulate the front, uh, drop-off and pickup.
Right.
Uh, applicant will put the dry well on the left side of the site in the front yard to mitigate any increased impervious coverage on the access lane, from the access lane. Uh, the proposed generator will be exercised during mid-days only once a week, to minimize impact to the surrounding neighbors. Applicant will conduct a site visit with the board engineer to address all concerns identified in the June twelfth, two thousand and eight letter. Applicant agrees to work with the board engineer to develop, to develop a landscape plan. Applicant proposes a six-foot-high solid wood fence to surround generator for screening and to assist with sound mitigation. Applicant will work with the board professionals post-approval to monitor pickup and drop-off, and to prevent stacking onto Mountain Avenue, which were concerns expressed by the van, excuse me, by the board. Applicant will make a lighting modification. Applicant agrees to a cap on enrollment at the school of forty-six students. Applicant agrees approval will be conditioned to be specific to this PACE program. An approval will run with the current program. Applicant agrees to striping, including arrows on driveway, and will work with the board professionals to develop this plan. And, just give me a second. I think I got everything.
I think, um, on the, uh, exercising the generator, I think we read the weekdays?
Yes, he said that.
Okay.
Was it, what did it say mid, did you say midday?
Midday, weekday.
Weekday.
Weekday, midday.
Weekday, midday. Weekday, midday.
Because it has to be exercised once a week.
I think that's... Yeah, we, we, one, our, one of our consultants had, had recommended once a month, but it'll certainly be more than once a week.
Okay.
I know some of the board members had said, no, it's gotta exercise more than that, but it would certainly be no more than once a week, it may only be once a month. So we'll just leave it at that.
All right, so, with that, and all the conditions, is there a motion to approve Application Twenty Eighteen dash nine, the Lutheran Senior Healthcare, Inc., at six thirty-nine Mountain Avenue, block twenty-nine oh-one, lot seventy-five, for a preliminary and final site plan, use variance with a bulk variance for senior living center? Is there a motion to approve?
I move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
May we have a roll call?
Vice Chair Roth?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Hoxton?
Yes.
Mr. Schnur?
No.
Mr. Poltrock?
Yes.
And Chairman Ponseka?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Good luck.
Thank you for your time, thank you for your work, thank you.
Yeah, yeah. I knew it was gonna be that.
No, I'm just curious. But I've seen...
Me?
Do something.
No, I'm just... Adhere to the ordinance. You didn't just put it thirty...
Well, I'm just finding something that you said. I just wanted to put something in chat.
Yes.
Oh, it's in discussion.
Again, I was, I'm just curious.
No, 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 it's not very cold in here. It was so warm when we first got... It's better cold than hot.
No, no, I...
Away, oh, you girl.
I didn't quite get it.
I didn't quite get it. Disgusting, I'd rather be scared.
I mean, if, that's more logical, yeah.
Is that what it was? Shoot the gum. Yeah, that is so. Shoot some gum.
Subdefuge. I saw you do it. I don't wanna ruin my dental work, I would've asked you for some.
Right now, August, there's nothing on it, so you guys would likely be...
Unless there, unless there's a residential, we go through that first.
If, if we have a residential fence, you know, I mean, they, they go, those are pretty quick.
Make, you know, do whatever...
The reason I, I said to ask again is because, I mean, why be disjointed? And if you want more people up here, then that's probably...
Yeah, you have six, and have all six yeses, I mean, you know, that's...
No, I understand.
So, I mean, I, I think, you know, it's...
What's the date and what was it?
What is, yeah, we just wanna make sure we...
Hold on.
Twenty-first.
Is it twenty-first?
Yeah.
Will I be, I will be here the twenty-first?
I will be here.
Just wanna make sure we have seven.
Yeah, I'll be here.
That's, I dropped him off the eighteenth, so I will be back for the twenty-first.
I'll be here.
Unless something happens, I'll be here.
Yeah, Lee gets dropped off the eighteenth, so I'm here.
Jen, she's not gonna be here.
So, if it happens, uh, Harris, and hopefully Mark.
And Lou, and Lou.
Yeah.
We, we should have at least seven people, hopefully.
Yeah, but only one once a week, please.
So, okay, so we'll do, we'll do twenty-four.
Okay.
So, why don't we just put that on the record, so there's no need to re-notice, okay? Is that, if you don't mind?
No, no.
Yeah, so...
Would you like me to do that?
Yeah, if you don't mind, yeah.
Sorry?
No, no.
Good evening, my name is Paul Constratori, representing the applicant Panera LLC. I just wanna put on the record that we are here, ready to go forward, because of the lateness of the hour, and because there are six, six members, and we'd like to have all of our presentation before everyone in person, we would consent to adjourning it to the next meeting, which is August twenty-first. And I'm just confirming, because this is made publicly here today, there is no need to re-notice.
Correct. Yep, your notice is valid, so the public is on notice, that, and you don't have to send anything else out.
Okay, so we will see you on the twenty-first, then?
Absolutely.
I appreciate it, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a nice evening. Okay, I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.